Go ahead and open. Would you like to do the Pledge of Allegiance? I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Ross, followed by the invocation by myself. Father, we thank you for all the blessings of this land, and we thank you for friends and neighbors, and for the opportunity to come together to discuss the public's business. We pray that you be with us this evening and guide us as we consider the right thing to do for our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. The first item is approval of your agenda. There are three bullpen items listed. The first two, which are appointments, would be added to the consent agenda, and the third item, because it requires discussion of two options, would be added if we might after the end of the consent agenda. Also, changes to your agenda. Item three, under the existing consent agenda, the appointment of Royal Schmidt has been requested to be pulled from your agenda. And the presentation, item one, the vote on the claim submitted by Brian and Jean Devoter, has asked to be moved to be taken up after closed meeting this evening. Those are the changes to your agenda.
Is there a motion? I will move to approve with those changes. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Jakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
That brings us to the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the consent agenda would be the approval of minutes for the January 8th, 2019 Board of Supervisors' meeting. Item two is to appoint the Board Representative to the Healthy Generations Area Agency on Aging Board of Directions? Board of Directors, I'm sorry. Item three has been pulled. Item four is the appointment of Mark Miles to the Economic Development Authority to fill an unexpired term ending March 31st of 2021. Item five is to authorize public hearing for an amendment to the exemption for elderly or disabled persons. This is Section 21-80 of the County Code, and the public hearing will be scheduled for February 26th, 2019 board meeting. And the additions would be the reappointment of Mr. Ross to the Transportation Committee, the appointment of Mr. Alfred King to the Economic Development Authority, representing the Cortlandt District, to fill an expired term ending March 31st of 2020. And that is it for consent.
Do we have anyone signed up for discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Todd Rump.
Good evening. My name is Todd Rump, and I'm in the Lee Hill District. The item on the consent agenda I want to talk about is the appointment of Supervisor Ross to the Transportation Committee. To be clear, I have no objection to Supervisor Ross serving on this committee. However, my comments are associated with his appointment indirectly. As a whole, I'd like to suggest that the transparency of the Transportation Committee continues to be lacking, especially considering potentially four board members could serve on it. Since 2017, only one agenda has been posted online. Since May of 2018, only one meeting minutes had been posted online. If this was a Citizens Advisory Committee, I'd be less concerned, but since a majority of the board potentially could serve on this committee, presumably debate traditionally held in a regular board meeting would be held in a Transportation Committee meeting, which inherently would draw less scrutiny than if it was at the dais at one of these meetings. I have no issue with the board serving on this committee. I just want that to be clear. I think the board created the committee. I think if everybody wanted to serve on it, that's perfectly fine, and I have no objections. However, I do suggest that the board consider broadcasting these meetings if the majority of the board is going to continue to serve on them. This would increase the transparency on an issue that most Spotsavianians would find of the utmost importance. If the cost is a concern of broadcasting these meetings, I would further suggest halting the broadcasts of the CBRC meetings to avoid any additional expense, since this is likely to be more of interest as it covers transportation issues than the CBRC deliberations. Thanks.
There are no other citizens sign up to speak?
Sir, anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak about the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll close this public presentation section. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Jakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Brings us to one of the, the third of the added items, Mr. Chairman, the resolution to change the Board of Supervisors' meeting date from February 5th, 2019, to either February 19th or March 5th of this year. This was the meeting under discussion for addition to your calendar for the S-Power hearings.
Do we want to have the regular comment period before taking up this item? The non-consent agenda? Public discussion, public presentation period?
At the board's pleasure. We did add this immediately following the consent agenda. So that's why I've mentioned it now, but if you would like to hear a public comment first, that's the board's pleasure.
There may be comment on this, which is why.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Trevor Wells, followed by Sean Fogarty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Trevor Wells. I'm from the Cortlandt District. I'm here with John Damon, who's from the Salem District. We are both veterans and volunteers of the Convention of the States. We are here to ask you to consider passing a local resolution in support of the state legislation to call for a Convention of States to propose amendments to the Constitution of the United States. John is going to pass around some packets. From the first time I voted for president while I was in boot camp at MCRD San Diego, I believe that my vote mattered. I thought that putting the right people into elected office at the federal level would alter the direction of the country. I was wrong. Ross Perot ran for president in 1992. His main agenda item was the national debt of 4.7 trillion. Since then, the makeup of the Congress and the presidency has shifted between parties, but the debt has steadily grown. It now stands at almost $22 trillion and is barely mentioned in political discourse. I look at the three children that my wife and I raised at our home in Spotsylvania County and wonder what they will face because of our leaders' inactions. Colonel George Mason knew Congress would never address crucial issues like term limits, federal overreach, spending, and taxes. He proposed a second method to amend the Constitution. Article 5, Convention of the States, gives the state legislatures a way to bypass the federal government and state governors to propose amendments to the Constitution that Congress wouldn't. The potential for federal overreach was understood so well by the delegates to the convention that it was adopted without debate, yet to this day it has never been used. As supervisors and citizens, you know how DC spending, taxing, rules, and regulations trickle down to the state and county level. You know this has impacted this board's authority, time, and money allocations. Convention of States currently has two proposed resolutions before the Virginia Legislature. House Resolution HJ 685 calls for the convention, and Senate Resolution SJ 268 is the faithful Commissioner's resolution to place limits on the delegates to the convention. There are over 3.7 million supporters of the Convention of States across the country. Spotsylvania County has over 740 Convention of the States petition signers supporting an Article 5 Convention of States, which is almost double from a year ago. Delegates Oric and Cole have been co-patrons of our resolutions in the past, and Delegate Cole has sponsored it again this year. The dysfunction in Washington has added fuel to the growth of this movement. Twelve states have already passed the resolution calling for a Convention of States. The Virginia State Legislature is celebrating 400 years of representative government this year. Virginia's own Colonel Mason created the Avenue of Redress, yet Virginia has failed to pass the resolution to date. When John and I took our uniforms off, our oath to the Constitution of this country did not end, just as I know many of you didn't leave your oath behind when you took off yours. Spotsylvania County has three state senators and-
Sir, your time has expired.
We are asking you to pass a resolution just like New Kent County Board of Supervisors' passed in support of the Convention of States. We are at your disposal if you have any questions or if you would like us to come back and give a presentation for more information. Thank you very much for your time.
Sean Fogarty, followed by Dave Hammond.
Sean Fogarty, Livingston District, speaking for the concerned citizens of Spotsylvania County as a group. With the completion of the Planning Commission's actions on the three S-Power SUPs, CCSC would like to provide you our assessment and concerns. As you know, the Planning Commission recommended denial of the three, of the two largest SUPs, 470 megawatts of the 500 megawatts proposed. Over the last two months, county staff has worked diligently under tight deadlines with the added challenge of evaluating and incorporating last-minute information and reports from S-Power. They've produced solidly researched staff reports with protective conditions for the county and its citizens. Could we have the floor computer, please? Can you open that up, Dave? That's the wrong briefing there, though. You need to go to the other. I'll just keep the second slide there. Although we've seen a significant improvement in the conditions during the review process, there are still a few issues that we will be raising regarding fire safety, setback exceptions, inadequate criteria for screening, and additional research on our remaining key concerns. Additionally, we understand that S-Power may not agree to the Planning Commission's recommended conditions related to setbacks and the decommissioning bond. We believe these two sets of conditions are critical to protecting the citizens' health and welfare and also the county's financial risk. Next slide. Other key concerns that we have going forward as you review this project, you can see there fiscal analysis showing the private commercial facility here will cost the county taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Short-term construction benefits will mostly flow to non-local, out-of-state companies and workers. S-Power's economic development claims are unsubstantiated, and long-term job claims are questionable. Next slide. Also, the facility will consume 10 square miles of the county's forest all in ag lands and will change the character and reputation of the county and is not in accord with the county's comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. Shifting to a different topic related to this, is a separate request for consideration of the board is the contract between S-Power and the Fawn Lake developer. S-Power's attorney provided a memo to the county dated January 8th, revealing, as you see in the quote there, S-Power has under contract approximately 200 acres located within the Fawn Lake development for the purposes of extending said public water line improvements and buffering the project from Fawn Lake. This confirms what many have known for months, that the S-Power purchase of Fawn Lake Parkway has become integral to the design of the site ASUP. Next slide, please. Most likely at the request of S-Power, in December, staff added a provision in the conditions document, which was approved by the Planning Commission, and you can see the wording there. I'll get to sort of the bottom line of that, which I underlined. It's my highlighting. The setbacks shall not apply along any boundary shared between the property and another property owned by the operators. So to our knowledge, there isn't, S-Power doesn't own any other property adjacent to their facility, so they can only be speaking of the Fawn Lake property here. Next slide. So our sort of bottom line, or my point on this on behalf of our group, is that we believe that because S-Power has made the NTS, they're the developer out there, they've made that land sale part of their mitigation efforts for water and setbacks as a minimum, that disclosure of that agreement would be required to meet at least the spirit of standard special-use permit procedures. Sensitive financial info can be redacted, but the Board of Supervisors and the public need to know what is planned, since the site ASUP design, including mitigations for water uses and setbacks, is contingent on this contract. Additionally, the Board of Supervisors should demand to know what the intention is for this land once purchased. Would it be a zoning request? Would it be solar panels? Would that be their intention? Would they go ahead and go back and try and build homes in there? That's the sum of that request, and I appreciate your time there. Thanks for your time, and look forward to review of these SUPs in the upcoming public hearing process. Thank you.
Dave Hammond, followed by Kathleen Hayden.
Good evening. My name is Dave Hammond, Livingston District. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about this memo that Sean just mentioned. And we'll play a game called Can You Spot the Difference. I don't know if you ever played Where's Waldo with your kids, but there's two memos from Herschler about this 200 acres of contract on Fawn Lake. Looks like the same memo to me. Next slide. So here's the text from two different versions of the same memo. One was from January 16th, which was just before. I actually downloaded this the morning of the public hearing, and it shows approximately 200 acres will be, is under contract. The next one, that mysteriously appeared on January 19th after the public hearing, it now says 60-plus acres. The next page. So this highlights a, this highlights a problem, I think a big problem for all of you and all of us, of version control and clarity on where the documentation is. The other problem is, S-Power has continually added new documents. So on the list here, on this page, is the list of documents that were submitted after the public hearing was closed for the Planning Commission. So what happens? The public is shut out of comment on this, and S-Power was granted hours on January 2nd to have their experts come in and present this material without public comment. We didn't even get three minutes on it. Next page. So my summary and recommendations. We need to get this version control under, you know, in hand. It needs to be clear when documents are changed, and it needs to be highlighted that they are changed. We can't go through hundreds of pages of documents and spot the difference. And then, as I mentioned, numerous changes were made to these materials, including the S-Power application documents, most of which were dated November 18th, but they didn't show up on the website until one week, when the agenda was published for the public hearing. So, and then I mentioned already, you know, additional documents come flooding in. And I don't think you can really stop additional documents if they're not core documents, but the ability to comment extensively on those is a big problem. And finally, I implore you to freeze, finalize, the S-Power application documents before we start into the public hearing process. This has to be finalized, and we all have to comment on the same basis. Thank you.
Kathleen Hayden, followed by Kevin McCarthy.
Kathleen Hayden, Livingston District, speaking on my own behalf. As we just talked about, S-Power said they were under contract to purchase 200 acres of future Fawn Lake home sites in a letter dated January 8th. Though this letter has been mysteriously changed to now say 60-plus acres, we should absolutely assume 200 acres is still the plan until there is evidence to the contrary. I'd like to describe the financial impact on the county if these 191 lots are never built on. Based upon recent new home sales in Fawn Lake, the average value for each new home would be $555,000. This is on the low side because many of the new recently, new builds have been in a section of smaller homes on much smaller lots. From that $555,000, I deducted $350,000 per home to account for the county services, the break-even number that we understand is the county, what the county references. So this data is actually based upon an average home value of $205,000. On 191 lots, there would be a loss of $333,000 a year, or over $10 million for the life of the project, and that's not starting the county until year five. And then there is the lost pulse of economic activity. If these homes are not built, local businesses lose too. Using data given by three Fawn Lake builders and a study by the National Association of Home Builders, material and labor costs are at least 56% of the finished home price, which in this case would be $311,000 per home. That's $59 million not going into our local economy if these homes are never built. And that does not include the ripple effect that these, that the labor wages would have on other aspects of the local economy. If we combine the lost property taxes, the revenue lost from not building, and take only a 5% property value loss on existing neighboring homes, the total lost income to the county just relating to housing is almost $79 million. And this is, this is based upon a conservative analysis of the data. The new home price and the percentage of construction costs I use is low, the break-even value is deducted, and the existing home value loss used is only 5%. That's even for homes like Mr. O'Biers', which will be hugely devalued by this project. These numbers are researched and conservative. You need to take this as a serious warning of the potential loss to the county. I've included some additional data that relates to this that I didn't have time for in your packet. Happy to answer any questions at a later time if you have questions regarding the data.
Kevin McCarthy, followed by John Doman.
All right. Thank you. Kevin McCarthy, Livingston District. I want to follow on to Kathleen's presentation. You'll see a couple of charts momentarily, but I also want to talk about S-Power's good neighbor strategy with Fawn Lake. At the first community meeting, and also on the air in various interviews, I've heard Daniel Menahem from S-Power talk about how in building this 500-megawatt plant, they'll be the perfect neighbors. You won't see us, you won't hear us, we won't cause any problems. Their actions, however, speak louder than their words. The site plan continues to show solar panels 50 feet away from portions of Fawn Lake without any screening. They have entered into secret negotiations with Fawn Lake's developer, NTS, and hide behind the claims of business confidentiality, and they're planning to stop the development of Fawn Lake by purchasing about 200 acres of residentially-zoned land in order to allow placement of solar panels on additional, on an additional 40 acres of A3 agricultural land. The next slide shows the illustration of this. This is the information that Kathleen just talked about. There are 28, 20 lots, 58. From left to right, you can see 20, 58 lots, 39 lots, 54, 19. I won't go into any detail unless anybody has questions, but that's 100, that's the 190 undeveloped lots that Ms. Hayden just referenced. And if you take a look at the next slide, that's the same map, but the green area surrounding what's commonly known as the dog leg, that's the area where if current, if the 350-foot setback, as mandated by the Planning Commission, is accepted for properties that S-Power owns, there's the 40 additional acres they have, because they can put solar panels up to 50 feet away from that property line. So and as Sean mentioned, that must be the area that one reference in the conditions made reference to, that one section made reference to. And finally, on the last page, let's talk about what this means to Fawn Lake, the cost of S-Power's encroachment into a residentially-zoned land, the loss of those 190 lots that have been part of the development plan for 27 years. That's since 1991, when Fawn Lake was first presented, approved, and began development. It reduces the size of our community by 14%. As Kathleen mentioned, it reduces the county's net revenue by $330,000 a year, or more. I just heard 79, somewhere between 20 and $79 million. But it also has a profound impact on their, on their good neighbors, right, in Fawn Lake. The loss of over $500,000 a year in HOA dues that support the operation of our community, and the loss of over $400,000 per year in Fawn Lake Country Club revenues. We have a major restaurant expansion and an event center underway, which was all based on the planned growth of the community, as it has been since the community was first presented and approved. Is it any surprise that there's such strong opposition to S-Power and their good neighbor policies? Thank you.
John Doman, followed by Richard Schwartzman. John Doman. Richard Schwartzman, followed by Todd Rump.
Good evening. My name is Richard Schwartzman from the Livingston District. You have a copy of this presentation. I'll abbreviate what you have in the interest of time. Allow me to begin by stating that I appreciate all that's been done by the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, staff personnel, and the countless county residents who have worked to help us all better understand this strategic issue involving the solar installation. I come before you tonight because I believe that the citizens of Spotsylvania have not heard enough specific details regarding the business due diligence process being conducted by our county. Nothing less than a comprehensive, holistic, and data-driven due diligence process will do. So before the county enters into a business arrangement with S-Power, one that'll last for decades, the county must ensure that S-Power's leadership, their record, current and past, mirrors that of our county's exemplary code of ethics. I believe that it's incumbent upon the Board of Supervisors to immediately request the following critical information covering the past 10 years of business performance. All active, pending, or threatened civil and criminal cases against the S-Power officials and the leadership team. All unsatisfied judgments, settlements, antitrust issues, and tax liens. All documents regarding proceedings, audits, filings, and investigations with regulatory agencies at the local, state, and national levels. Certificates of good standing for each Secretary of State where the company currently does business and where officers and the leadership team have done business in previous positions. Any ExxonFlorio issues for national security and foreign investment. All articles and press releases, positive and negative, about the company and its leadership team. A list identifying and describing any and all environmental liabilities or contingencies. A list of hazardous materials used in production of solar panels that will be transported on county roads. A list identifying and describing all previous hazardous material issues involving the company's leadership team. A list of any superfund exposures. A description of the company's disposal methods for all hazardous materials and recyclables. And finally, a list of terminated licenses for S-Power and predecessor companies. In closing, thank you, gentlemen, for all you've done and all you will do for our county.
Todd Rump, followed by Alma Buckley.
Good evening. My name is Todd Rump, and I'm in the Lee Hill District. I wanted to talk briefly about the presentation you'll get later today about the public safety compensation presentation, but my comments cover all county employees. I felt this subject was important enough to ensure that you all knew that some citizens support these compensation increases with the understanding that it would probably cause a tax increase to county residents. I don't think that we need to have the highest salaries in the region, but they must be competitive, and more and more it seems like they are not. It's clear that the Evergreen Study that was conducted several years ago had flaws. They have been pointed out to this board several times. Again, I just wanted to voice my support to address this issue and highlight if a firefighter or sheriff's deputy, a DSS worker, or any other county employee fell through the cracks through the Evergreen Study and is not receiving their just compensation for competitive salaries, I think the HR department should be directed to find them and fix the issue. I think before you, you have two options. Either direct county HR staff to find those not receiving market pay and address it as applicable, or state publicly that you disagree with the characterizations made about the Evergreen shortcomings study. County employees need deeds, not words. Thank you.
Alma Buckley.
Alma Buckley, Cortlandt District. First of all, I want to start out by thanking the various board members who have been very supportive of our case with, our CPS case with Juan Antonio. It is far from over. We had a signed court order that said Juan Antonio was supposed to be coming home December 24th. One of your board members struck- One of your board members struck a deal with our lawyers in exchange for not suing this We would get our son back. We have not gotten him back. On November 19th, DSS still refused to start any type of visitation with Juan Antonio. We asked over and over and over, we have a signed court order. Judge Ellis has said he is coming home. They kept saying no. Judge Ellis had to start his own visitation schedule. DSS just sat there silent. The gal, Carolyn Sekley, sat there silent, not giving any input of how to start bringing our son back home. Judge Ellis even called us total strangers, and he was not going to give us our son back by December 24th. On December 20th, the gal suddenly comes up with a visitation plan. Why is DSS not coming up with their own visitation schedule? They do this all the time. They reunify families all the time. Why are we being treated this way? I cannot help but feel I am being treated unequally because I am a minority. I am 100% Latina. And what this county is doing to our family has been a plus two years in this case, this situation. DSS rather let the foster parents, parents watch the kid, my son, Juan Antonio, instead of us. We ask, hey, they're going to be out of state? We will watch Juan Antonio. We have a court order that says he's coming home. They repeatedly say no. They are beyond help. They need more than just accountability. They need a total makeover. What they are doing to us, and I cannot begin to imagine what they are doing to countless other families, and not to mention the state and federal money that is going to support children in the foster care system. By the way, foster kids are not benefiting very much. Very few come out of the foster care system well. And Juan Antonio deserves to be with the family. I was exonerated. This county charged me criminally, two felonies, a misdemeanor. I was exonerated on a motion to strike. I did not abuse my child. As a matter of fact, DSS took my child after he was three days in the hospital. After he comes out of an hour and a half to two hours surgery, four, four or five hours later, they decide they're going to take him. And not only going to take him, they're going to charge me criminally, they're going to give me the worst level one finding, administrative finding they could give me. And then on top of it, I get aggravated circumstances. I'm sorry.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak?
Is there anyone who did not sign up who'd like to speak at this time? Yes, in front.
This is a public comment period. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
In a discussion as to how the county will benefit or not benefit from the solar plant. It appears that the restrictions put on by the Planning Commission go a long ways to resolving many of the issues which we complained about. The problem is that the $600,000, which S-Power originally promised, 600,000 a year for 30 years, seems to have vanished. At this point, there will be modest tax revenues from the existing solar plant once it's built. We're going to lose significant tax revenues, and we can argue that as to exactly how much will be lost. But nobody, I have heard nobody say that there will be tax increases, tax revenue increases because of this plant. You're going to have to make a decision as to how much burden you want to put on the county residents to support a solar plant that has no significant benefit for the county and the county residents. Discussing the postponement of the public hearings based on what we just heard, it seems to me that we should postpone the public hearings until S-Power has provided a definitive proposal that can be examined in detail. The S-Power expert report on the financial impact of the loss of the buildable lots in Fawn Lake is probably the worst single report I have ever seen. I have been an expert witness in some 40 cases. I've always had opposition from experts. The report that they submitted, that S-Power submitted on behalf of its proposal is the single worst expert report I have ever seen. And to have S-Power argue on the basis of that report is a travesty. I am in the process of preparing a rebuttal that will be in the newspaper and that I will send to you. But I urge you, do not believe that there's any tax increase available for the county as a result of the S-Power proposal.
Is there anyone else who did not sign up?
Good evening. Justin Langridge, President, Spotsylvania Career Firefighters Association, 3886. If I could have five minutes, please, I won't take it all. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'll be brief tonight. Thank you all for the time that several of you have already given us face to face, and for Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Skinner directing for staff leadership to deliver tonight's report on public safety compensation to you all. We're not looking to take anything away from anyone. We're only looking to correct oversights in the public safety side of Evergreen. If there are oversights in other departments, those need to come forward to you all. After tonight's report, please take time to ask any questions, and if possible, please be clear in your direction to staff on how you'd like them to proceed with regards to this matter and the FY '20 budget. Please direct them publicly if you can. We've been coming to you all for a long time with this issue. There's a plan to address it. Please support it. My phone's been blowing up tonight. I don't know where they all are, but I've got a lot of members streaming this video or watching this meeting at home or wherever they may be. You've got a lot of county deputies in the back that risk their lives. Please support them.
The gentleman in the back's been waiting, if you want to...
Thank you, sir. My name is Darren O'Shields. I live on Mine Road in Spotsylvania County. And I came here actually to say something, speak with Mr. Skinner and the rest of you. But if it's with your permission, I'd like to yield the remaining three minutes of my time. Back to Ms. Buckley. I've already had one presenter ask for five minutes and didn't need it. I figure we have two and a half more minutes that she could speak.
Is that permissible under the rules?
Our bylaws do not permit, your bylaws do not permit yielding of time to a speaker.
Prefer if you would just make your own points.
Question for Mr. Skinner. We met last couple of weeks ago, correct?
Yes.
You came to my house. Mr. Jakubowski is my district supervisor. Am I pronouncing that properly? Okay. Thirty-three phone calls, sir, I've made to you, asking to corroborate Mr. Skinner coming to my home under your direction. Thirty-three phone calls since I met Mr. Skinner. Mr. Skinner, you came to my home. You're not my district supervisor. Nothing but polite and professional. I appreciate it. You brought a gentleman to my home I don't know, and you asked me if I would clean my yard. Do you remember that day? You do? Okay. Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes. You asked me if I was storing oil on my property, asked me if I was running a business on my property, and said that you were making a courtesy call because a retired county official had made a complaint about me. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, we're not supposed to have this dialogue.
I was just going to interrupt that.
Okay.
This session here is not a, an answer, question and answer portion. You may present anything you'd like to in three minutes, but we really do not answer those questions. If you would like to stay after this meeting, I'd be more than happy to talk to you, sir.
If I could have some latitude and go through this in a public forum, I'd greatly appreciate it, considering that my county officials have not returned my phone call. I will bring this to a close quickly.
Sir, all I can tell you is please say what you have to say, but we cannot and will not respond to those questions back here under public comments. Then we open it up to everybody. We will not do that, sir. Thank you.
Understood. I will say in closing that I believe it is my First Amendment constitutional right to have a regress of grievances with my government. Good to go? Thank you for your time, Mr. Skinner.
Mr. Ross.
Mr. Chair, with, without objection from the board, I would request that we give Mrs. Buckley an additional two more minutes. It's been done before. It actually was done tonight already. Not the additional two minutes, but additional time.
Is there any objection from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Buckley, did you want to finish your statement?
I only want to clarify how I have been treated unequally and unfairly in this ordeal with trying to get Juan Antonio restored to us. Currently, DSS is not increasing any time the gal is taking over. Juan Antonio still sees the foster parents every single day. I do not understand how that is working to Juan Antonio's benefit to bring him home to us. We have a court order that says he's coming home. Everything that should have happened from October to December is happening now. I have gone to parental assessments, evaluations through a psychologist. I'm getting ready to do another psychological parental capacity. Never mind, I've been parenting, I've been a mom for over 23 years, but somehow they feel that this is necessary. You guys, taxpayers, are paying for that, for me to have that done. It seems like no matter what I do, there is always more that they are tasking upon us to do. There is no end date in sight when Juan is coming home. I don't know when he's coming home. And we had a court order, and apparently, in this state, court orders don't mean anything. I want justice for Juan. Juan Antonio needs to come home to his loving family. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who didn't sign up who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. I believe we were addressing the change of meeting date.
Yes.
And the resolution was distributed to board with the agenda and the options. There are two optional dates, either February 19th or March 5th.
Is there any discussion or a motion from the board?
Mr. Chair, so are these dates for, for the actual public hearing? Are we having one public hearing? Or are we having multiple public hearings? Are we doing all three, A, B, and C, at the same time?
At this time, I believe we're scheduling all three on the same night.
Okay. And then did the applicant, what's the end date? Did they agree to a later end date than they currently have? Because it was in March. Is it now April 30th? So if we have a public hearing on the 5th of March, then we don't actually decide until up to the end of April? Well, I think, you know, there were some comments made tonight about freezing when the information comes in. I think that's a good thing. I don't think we should keep getting more information as we go along. I also think if we do hear this that early, and I can't, I mean, it's up to the board to decide that we shouldn't close out the public hearing part, or in this case, it'd be from March 5th to nearly April 30th, almost, you know, almost eight weeks, not quite. I wouldn't want that much time period go between the closeout of the public hearing and when we actually have to make a decision. So that's just my input.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McLaughlin.
So I guess my question, we didn't advertise the 5th, though, correct? The next, February 5th? Did we advertise it? See, my concern is, is that has the applicant requested the date? Because we just spent $1,000 or so advertising a hearing that's not going to occur, right? And my concern is if we're picking a date without input from the applicant and they choose not to do it again, did we just spend another $1,000 of taxpayer money for a meeting we're going to cancel?
The legal notices for February 5th are all teed up and ready to go, depending on the board decision this evening. So at this point, no letters have been mailed and no advertisements have been placed in the paper.
Okay, so we haven't executed any dollars right now?
None.
So personally, I mean, I was scheduling my, my work schedule, travel schedule around dates of the board, so you're adding two dates I can't do. If you're going to do it, do it the 5th. Otherwise, I can't attend either one of those other meetings, or change the other date.
Mr. Jakubowski.
Thank you. Clarification, why are we looking to move the February 5th date? Is it our side, or is it the applicant's side?
Wanda, can you speak to that?
The applicant has requested it, received an email that was sent to Ed Petrovich and myself on Friday, January 18th, saying that S-Power desires to extend the Board of Supervisors' decision period to the end of April, April 30th. And they desire to move the scheduled February 5th meeting to February 19th if available, if not, March 5th. And they didn't provide any additional detail.
So we're not sure why they want it moved. They just want it moved. Could it be because of the Planning Commission's actions that they took that they're responding to those? I mean, I'm...
Potentially. I haven't had any conversation with them related to this, so I can't speak to it.
Well, I would have liked to have known. I understand from, you can only give me the information that you have, but it would have been helpful to know why they would have liked it moved, because without knowing that, I'm not sure why we should move it. The, the date has been set, we're moving forward. If at that point, if we need for some reason to continue the public hearing, we can always do that. But I think that we should at least start it, and we do have time to, to work through the issues as we go along, and keep the public hearing open if we even feel it necessary to do so. But to continually put it back, I just, I'm not sure what the purpose is behind that.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Benton. I'll just ask, have we done this for others? Have other, we've had other requests for extending out SUPs and the like?
Yes, we have. And the board has moved dates, yes.
Have we ever not moved a date that you know, that you're aware of?
Excuse me?
Have we ever not moved the date that you're aware of?
I don't recall that situation happening, no.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, just one last thing I'll point out is we have a regular scheduled meeting on the 12th. Why don't we just host it then? I mean, I'm not sure why we're, we can always hold another meeting after that, since they've agreed to push their, move their schedule to the right, to the left? Correct. That's a regular meeting, that's what, yeah.
I'll just say, I chose, I suggested the 5th originally, since the Planning Commission didn't take a vote until the third meeting that they considered it, I wanted to pick a date far enough in advance of our deadline in case we needed additional meetings. Since they've agreed to move back the deadline, that might not come into play, so I'm somewhat on the fence, but that might be the deciding vote, so that's, that may be a problem. Mr. Skinner.
What if we just do what Tim said, and let's plan on the 12th? February is the first meeting. And then if we need additional time, and we can coordinate, my understanding is that because of the concerns that the citizens have, what the Planning Commission asks for S-Power to do, as far as the different, you know, silicone panels and stuff of that nature, they needed extra time to put that together. See exactly how that was going to work. So personally, I'd like, I think this is a very big decision that we're going to make. And the Planning Commission took the time. They needed to get it correctly. And the planning commission took the time, they needed to get it correctly. And I want to have enough time to actually look at everything that's going to happen, all the concerns and stuff of that nature. And let's just drop the 5th and make a regular meeting. And then if we need additional time, obviously, they said they would extend it to April 30th for us. So I think they need time, I think we need to give them time, is my personal opinion. I'd rather just drop the 5th and then keep with the 12th. Mr. McLaughlin will be at that meeting, and we'll know if we need any additional time. I'm sure we will. But the problem is if we do it on the 12th, it's, we've got other agenda on the schedule, and it could go late into the night, well past.
The FY '20 budget presentation, for example, is scheduled for the 12th.
Yeah. So my opinion, we're just, let's move it 30 days. We can change it to a date that you can be there, Mr. McLaughlin? If you give us a date, we'll try to see if everybody else can make it, business and everything of that nature. Do you have that date by any chance that you could look at? Okay.
So at this time, do we want to just suspend the February 5th meeting and leave it open?
How do we do that? What's illegal?
Right.
If you want to cancel the February 5th meeting, you can vote to cancel that and provide notice to the public, obviously, that, you know, you won't be meeting. With respect to, you know, having the S-Power, this hearing, the special use permits, having a public hearing, you can do that at any one of your regular scheduled meetings. You just need to make sure, Wanda needs to know which one that's going to be so she can advertise it and meet all those legal requirements. If you want to set another meeting, you can certainly set a special meeting of the board and go through all the iterations of, you know, setting a special meeting on a different date, you know, further on down the line. But it does take some coordination, but it's certainly an option that you all can do.
Mr. Button?
Don't we have meetings just about every Tuesday in March, except for the 5th? I believe we do.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jacobowski?
Do we have anything on March 12th? If it's the pleasure of the board, I'd rather use an existing date than having to add another one. But it seems that in getting into budget time, we're going to be running into requests from departments and the schools and all the other fun stuff that we deal with at budget time. So I'm not really sold on moving it. I understand that we've done it in the past, but usually the applicant, you know, lets us know why. And not knowing why, I'm, we can always hold it open. We can always have the public hearing on the 5th, hold it open, and continue it on to another date if we see fit. But I don't think that February 12th would work with the budget presentation. That would be unfair to everybody that comes out to have to sit through that or have the budget presentation at the end of it. It's too many big things happening on one date. So we would have to think of a special date to have the SUPs for S-Power.
Agreed. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Could we confirm? I think we have a joint meeting set on March 12th with the school board. I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to think. I don't have it written down.
If I may, Mr. Chairman? The only Tuesday that we have available in March is the 5th.
Mr. Chairman, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
No.
It could be any day.
Do you have a date?
If you want, we could hold, could you, would the budget be ready on the 5th? We could hold the budget hearing on the, or the budget presentation on the 5th and hold the public hearing on the 12th.
No, sir. No, we won't have it printed and prepared in that timeframe. Sorry.
The regular scheduled meeting on the 26th of February have a lot on the agenda. Or is it too early to tell?
There are two presentations that I recall, but I don't believe it's a very full agenda at this point. We can move, I think the things that come to mind for me, we can move. Do you have a recollection that would be helpful? No, I don't have it in front of me, Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Jacobowski?
My suggestion, just to move this along, would be that if this, if we do have time out till the end of April, that at the first meeting that we have in February on the 12th, to figure out a date at that time that we can stick to, check with S-Power, see if those two dates that they have brought forward would be hard and fast for them, move ahead at that time. I still would prefer to keep it on the 5th, but if it's the will of the board to move it to another date, that would be fine. But I think that we need to nail it down at our next meeting and not try to, you know, guess at that point.
Is there a motion to cancel the meeting on the 5th and reschedule the S-Power public hearing to a later date, undetermined at this time? If not, I will so move.
Yeah.
Is there further discussion?
Mr. Taylor, do you believe the 26th will work? Now, you said you had two presentations off your mind.
And I believe we could move those if necessary to accommodate the 26th.
Thank you.
You, Ben.
If no one else on the board has any objections to it, I'd like to move that we schedule that hearing for the 26th.
I'll accept that as a friendly.
February 26th.
Mr. Jacobowski?
Clarification, would that be 6 o'clock or 4:30? And what would be the location?
We have it set, that meeting is set to be a 6 o'clock meeting. Due to the number of people that would be showing up, I would make the suggestion and put it part of my motion, we move the meeting to 4:30, and we have the location at the Marshall Center, same Mr. Planning Commission meeting was.
And if that's the case, I would just recommend provide that direction to us, and we'll come back again. We need to prepare a resolution to move the time and location of the meeting. We'll have that ready for you at the next meeting for you all to vote on, if that's the desire of the board to move the location of the 26th February meeting. We can do that.
We'll delay this motion until the end of the meeting. This meeting.
I'd also, Commander, I'd also like you to investigate the schools, the auditoriums that might be available on the 26th, correct? To see if they're available or not in the future, because as we come back to our next meeting, we'll have that information, plus we'll have the information from S-Power, why they need the delay.
What's next on our agenda this evening?
Board reports, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jacobowski, board report.
Yes, sir, thank you. I have two requests of staff. One, it's on the newspaper that our smart scale items did not make it. I've yet to see a report. And just between me and you, I really hate relying on the freelance star for my information. So, because I still don't even know what has been approved and what hasn't. It's just that it sounds like a lot of the stuff in Spotsy, some of the bigger stuff at least, did not make the cut. So if we can get a report back on that as soon as we can, and then figure out a way, because I do know that one of those that we had put up for smart scale funding was the Germana Connection Road, which is, I think, going back to our IJR report, with the J-Ramp had shown that it was critical to traffic, moving traffic in the Massuponics area. And we had all stated, well, a lot had stated that waiting for smart scale was the way to go, because then we can get the state to pay for it. Well, the state's not going to pay for it, so now what do we do? We do have bond money that is out there that the voters did approve in 2014, which I would like to investigate, using that to move that project forward, because we are now another year behind in getting it started. Part two of my board report would be to have, in an upcoming board meeting, not sure which one, we can have a discussion about Route 1 revitalization. I know there was a discussion with the Urban Land Institute about potential studies that might be done and costs that that might, that the county money occur for those. In the budget last year, I do believe $50,000 was set aside for the studies beyond what we have been able to do in-house, and also to take that information and to move that forward. I would also suggest, as part of that, I know staff has already done some of the legwork on this, and I, forgive me, don't remember exactly how much and how far they had gone with it, but also to suggest a TIF for that area. Use the baseline funding of, or I'm sorry, the baseline tax revenue from that area, we defined the area, and then all new revenue that comes in from that new, or I should say, from taxes above and beyond that baseline, would then go towards the revitalization, and that would mean the road improvements, the bearing of the overhead utility lines, and other things that we need in that area to clean it up. So if we could do that at some point in the next couple of months, I understand, as we saw tonight, the schedule is kind of fluid, and we are moving things around. I just don't want this to get lost in the shuffle and it be another year before we are moving on it. Thank you.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Ross? Yeah, I would just like a report back from staff or DSS on exactly what, as much information as is legally possible to give to the board of what's going on with the Buckley case. That's all I have.
Mr. Button?
No report.
Mr. Marshall?
Just one thing. At previous board meeting, back in the spring, we had a discussion with utilities over getting some informational boards posted at convenience sites. I'd like to see if we could direct staff to, let us know how that project's coming along. That's something that would be beneficial to the folks in the community that don't have access to the internet, especially at my way, so we can get some of these health notices and different things. If you don't have internet, everybody goes to a convenience site to throw their trash away. It'd be another avenue for us to get notices to the public. Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you. Just one, if Mr. Petrovich and Mr. Love Day, please, could you give us a quick presentation, not this time, but whenever we get a chance, about the convenience site off of Mine Road, putting in something for home construction, not necessarily a builder, but when you tear a room down, instead of having to go all the way over to Harrison Road, I know that we can put another dumpster in there strictly for home, rugs and stuff of that nature. Would you mind doing that, sir?
Yes, sir, we'll bring it back to the board.
I know we've talked about it, so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
And I have no report. What's next, Mr. Taylor?
That should bring us then, Mr. Chairman, to the public safety compensation report.
Gentlemen, at your meeting in December, several of you had requested that Sheriff Harris and I come back and report on challenges we're having with recruitment and retention. So we have a few brief slides to go through, and then I would like to open the floor up to any questions you may have that we can shed light on things for you.
First of all, thank you for everything you do for public safety. I know in the past seven years, I've asked for a lot, and the board has been great in taking care of our public safety. Both Sheriff's Department and Fire Department made our community a much safer place. A perfect example would be the work you gentlemen have done with me on the SROs in our schools. So for that, I thank you. I think tonight, the chief and I are going to speak pretty much just about public safety. I know that there are a lot of county agencies, and I think all the county employees deserve fair compensation, but we're going to focus strictly on public safety since we're responsible for that. In 2018, Spotsylvania Sheriff's Department had 14 vacant positions. Six of those positions were created by deputies and personnel leaving the Sheriff's Department to go to other agencies in the area that was all based on salary. I'm from the old school, as you guys know, and I was taught to be true to my school. But nowadays, it seems to be a different little thought pattern out there. You go where you can make enough money to support your family. We have made this statement before, from the time that we recruit deputies till we get them through training, we're looking at a period of 12 to 18 months before that deputy is released to full duty. This includes the hiring process, 22-week academy, 400-plus hours of field training, and it's at an approximate cost of $75,000 to each one of the deputies that we hire. And that's for the academy, the salary for the new hire, the training, the equipment and everything that comes along with a new hire. So when we recruit and hire and send them to school, and they leave to go to another jurisdiction somewhere normally to the north, and they can make considerable more money, I don't think a lot of the younger generation factors in the travel time, the cost of wearing out a vehicle every year and things that accompany that, but they're looking only at salary. Of the last two recruitments that we have attempted, we had 208 applicants. Out of that 208 applicants, we were able to hire six people. And that's the obvious question with that is, why such a low amount of people out of 200 people, you hire six? We have high standards for this community. And as the sheriff, I'm not prepared to lower standards. I think the citizens in this county, Spotsylvania is a great place to live, work, and raise your family. And I don't think the public would expect me, as sheriff, to lower the standards that we have for this community. And I don't think any board member here would want to make a public comment about lowering The pay for experienced help in retention, retention would greatly benefit Spotsylvania County. As already mentioned by previous speakers tonight, the Evergreen Study was good, did a lot for the community, a lot for the county. However, I don't think it covered every facet that we should have covered or that the study should have covered. By being able to bring experienced deputies into the county, that would allow us to cut down on training, to cut down on costs. And in order to do that, we have to be able to meet those salaries. If we hired an experienced deputy from another jurisdiction, and we could place that person in our system based on their legitimate law enforcement experience, if they came in at a higher rate, a step two, or three, four higher than where they would be with their current employer, it would give us a much greater pool of possible applicants. The experienced deputies add a lot to the force. An experienced deputy can do a report in a quarter or half the time as a younger agent. You learn to deal with people, you know what questions they ask, you know what to do, you know what resources we have available, and you know how to use those resources for the best of the agency. The experienced deputies, this is one reason I try to recruit a lot of people from Spotsylvania County, knowing this is a big county. And knowing this county is a third of the battle, gentlemen. If you know that you're at Four Mile Fork and there's an emergency call at Lake Anna, you know how to get there, you know what the best route's to go, you know the time of day, you know the traffic. And when you factor things, that's not something you can teach unless you're familiar with the area. Experienced deputies... Experienced deputies fill the specialty teams. And this is really critical to me because when you have experienced deputies that we can recruit from other agencies that have served on the SWAT team, the DIVE team, the K-9, the drone program, all the specialties, the SWAT team, narcotics investigation, good detectives to work in everything from child abuse to homicides, that's what we need to be recruiting. And in order to do that, if we had a step program that the chief and I will talk a little bit about tonight, to bring our guys up to par with the average in this area, I'm not talking about comparing Spotsylvania County to LAPD or Fairfax County, but I am saying, gentlemen, that there are things that I think we could do to keep the retention. I don't have the issues that fire services has, have right now with the amount of employees leaving the Sheriff's Department as I think the chief may touch on. I don't want to steal your thunder here, Jay. But I think we're very fortunate. We have a lot of dedicated employees in this county that are in Spotsylvania County because they live here, their families are here, they've gone to school here, their parents live here, and that's a great factor for us until it comes down to the bottom dollar, which is what the guys and ladies and gentlemen have to look at now to raise their families. Spotsylvania County is not what it was 40, 50 years ago when a lot of us moved into this county because we could afford to live here. A lot has changed. Public safety is growing. I think the population in this county now, a lot of it that I look at as the commuting community are used to being in jurisdictions where they have public safety that meets their standards. They have that fire truck with the ladder in case they need it in a high-rise apartment or they have the right, they have the ability to know what is available to public safety. And as mentioned earlier by one of the speakers, I think most people are willing to pay a little bit more to have public safety at the level it needs to be at to protect this community. We are no longer rural Spotsylvania County. We are, times have changed a lot since I first set foot in Spotsylvania County. So I'm going to turn it over to the fire chief now unless you want to ask me specific questions or wait until after the chief talks.
Wait till after I, go. As the sheriff said, we're, we're both dealing with situations with recruitment and retention. Some of us, I guess, each of us is dealing with challenges kind of on the opposite side of the coin are the larger struggles. While the sheriff deals with a lot of challenges recruiting new deputies, we share in that somewhat. What we ended up having to do was do away with all of our minimum training requirements. So that's, that's why our recruit academy lasted six months because we're essentially taking someone who's off the street, again, making sure they're a good person that's going to be able to be successful, putting them through that training and training from the ground up. So that is, has helped significantly, although I would say that our application rates are not really staying up to the level that we would desire. So we are also looking at the ability to increase the number of applicants we get so that we can really hone down to those, those people that are going to serve the community the best. So we are, we're continuing to work on that. Our more significant issue is that of retention. For the past three years, we've had about 10% turnover every year. And as a matter of fact, already in 2019, just in the past few weeks, I've already received five additional resignations since that time. The, the cost of that to the county financially, just for the first six months of putting someone through the academy, really costs us a little under $27,000 per person. So as we, you know, multiply that towards an average of 20 per year, you're well over $500,000 each year that's going out the door instead of retaining that value of the employee that's familiar with the county, that's learning more about the department, that's developing as they go through their positions. This does not even take into account the, the costs associated with ALS providers or more tenured employees that have gained additional experience of driving and operating apparatus that can serve in an acting officer's role that are essentially serving as our field training officers. So those are some of the things that we, we struggle with financially. The other things I mentioned are things that are kind of the greater weakness of that to our system. What we're looking to do is to be able to provide a roadmap essentially for someone to progress through their pay scale. We'll get into the details about that more in a second. But realizing our employees are, are looking for something that they can grasp in the future. They need to have something to look forward to. A lot of our competitors, if you want to call it that, that are seeking those same applicants and quite often, our employees that are being targeted for recruitment, they have a, a format, whether you want to call it a step system, a pay increment system, that builds that roadmap so someone knows or at least has an expectation of what they're going to make five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. That I think is probably the, the component that is lacking from the, the recent implementation of our, our compensation program. While well-intentioned, and I, I would say it definitely has done a lot. I don't think it has gone to the extent that will make us truly successful. So thinking about some of the other intrinsic values that we are losing, the fire service, the way we progress through the careers is a lot of mentorship. So when I have people leaving after a few years, I have this gap in the middle of our, our workforce. So we've got, got a handful of fairly experienced personnel, usually in officers' roles, and then I've got a lot of brand-new people. That turnover of 10% every year continues to eat away at that middle ground. So I lose those people that are able to operate a variety of equipment. Those people that operate that equipment are the ones that really train the other firefighters coming up. So I lose that ability to pass on that knowledge as they're going through. The other thing is, you know, if I don't have people to replace the officers that are going to be promoting up and eventually retiring, thankfully, we've got a, a large number of very faithful employees. It does create a leadership vacuum that I'm struggling to, to fill. So I'm trying to, trying to identify tools that will be able to fill that gap, maintain those highly trained, driven employees that, all the ones that I, I talk to, I try to talk to almost everyone that leaves the, the county. They really love the department. They love working for the county, but they really have to look out for what's best as far as what they see for their families. And they're looking at, where am I going to be five years from now? Where am I going to be 10 years from now? And we don't necessarily have that in place. So what we're trying to, at least encourage discussion, is to move down the road of developing, implementing a pay increment system that essentially takes that pay grade, so the scale for whatever grade someone is in, and moves them through the course of their career from year one through year 25 or more of their career and moves them through that scale. While there are longevity payments in place that have been implemented over the past couple of years, we have one more year of that planned. That is, that is helping, but I don't think, again, it's to the extent that a lot of the people that we have in our departments are, are looking for. And we're trying to find a way to bridge that gap, to give people an opportunity to look into the future and see what Spotsylvania County has to offer them. So the, the compensation plan that was proposed, it's still, of course, in a draft version, was originally presented at the October meeting of the Public Safety Committee, following discussion back in July about concerns about turnover. So this is really not a new topic. What we're trying to do is introduce a, a new potential solution to the problem that we're experiencing. But this, this, this plan essentially provides that mechanism to move someone through that pay grade. Even if someone has no desire to promote into an officer's rank, a firefighter still has value and gains value every year they're, they're in that position. They're gaining the ability to do more skills. They learn more about the county. They're able to operate more equipment. They're able to train additional personnel that are coming in. I'm sure the sheriff has very, very similar examples of that as well. This plan would also provide, again, that ability to compete with other localities that are offering pay incentives based on prior experience. We really don't have that capability right now built into a structure. I actually received a, a recruitment communication to me from a county, a couple of counties north, that was offering me 60% for every year of experience I had in a career department. I think I'll stay in Spotsylvania. But that is what everyone in my department is receiving on a regular basis. As a paramedic, I receive at least monthly mailings from other departments trying to recruit me. All the people in my system that are paramedics are receiving that same recruitment effort. So it's not that our employees are necessarily going out looking, but they're actively being targeted by other localities and we're just trying to hold on to them because they're good people.
Let me just say a couple of things, Jay. To go along the same lines with what the chief is saying now, we have, we are very proud of the special units that we have in the Spotsylvania County Sheriff's Department. And we are a leader in this area in search and rescue, the SWAT team, the K-9 program. A lot of these specialty units, we train them. So the fact that we have personnel, and it's the same with Jay's crew, that can go out and train other jurisdictions, we're getting ready to start a K-9 school now to assist our neighbors. And we do this to make the entire area safer, but it also makes Spotsylvania County safer too to keep the surrounding jurisdictions that we assist and train. A perfect example is our communication system. We have one of the best in the state of Virginia and we're blessed with that. Occasionally, we have a little bump in the road. But our communications personnel, we just had one of the supervisors leave us to go to a local jurisdiction to be the supervisor for a regional communication system. So by having the people that we have and the quality of people that we have that have been here for years, 10, 12, 15 years, as the fire chief is saying, when we lose those people in the center of the food chain, the experience that we lose cannot be replaced. And that's the same with fire and the Sheriff's Department. Once it's gone, it's gone. And these mentors that want to be here and want to be part of our system that leave, and it's all money, gentlemen. It's, it's nothing else. Nobody wants to start commuting to Northern Virginia when they can be here in Spotsylvania County, as Mr. McLaughlin will attest to. Been there and done that. But I just wanted to point out that the specialty units in this Sheriff's Department are above reproach anywhere in this part of the state. We have things going on right now that I can't talk about with animal control where they're working in different parts of the state. And it's because of the expertise that the people in the middle and the top of this program bring to Spotsylvania County that are offered jobs daily as the chief was talking about being a paramedic. We have people that are specialty in all these different fields that other agencies would gladly welcome them with open arms. But if our guys can look at that comprehensive play pant, play pay plan, I'll get it out in a minute, and see that 15 years down the road, they're going to be making this and they can still support their family. Or 20 years down the road, even if they stay in their current position as a detective and don't try to come up the promotion chain, that they can still afford to live in our county and raise their family here.
Some of the additional things we were looking at are the, the ongoing complaints you've, you've heard for years that the Evergreen plan was intended to resolve. And I think it helped in dealing with pay compression and leapfrogging, but I, I don't think it is a necessarily long-term fix based on the way we administer compensation based on promotions, coal as merits and so forth. Because I think that continues to compound and there's, there's some current discrepancies that we're actually working on currently to try to resolve. But this, again, a pay increment program, very similar to what any of you that have been in the military, you're familiar with that. A step program, so to say, rewards people for performance, for continued development and training, but really standardizes what an employee should be making based off their, their years of experience and their level of performance. There's, right now, there's a lot of discrepancy in that within our own compensation system. Again, let me, let me reiterate what the, the sheriff was saying earlier is that this does not take away at all from what may exist in other departments in the county. You know, this may be something that could be applied countywide. All we are speaking to right now, though, is public safety for that's our responsibility. And we want to make sure that if something was done specifically for public safety, that we are not looking to pull away funding from any other departments that are just as deserving. So we want to be, be very clear in that. But this would take a, a significant investment to get our personnel to the compensation levels that they should be in, or at least in our opinions. After that, it would, it would basically kind of, kind of level out. You'd be looking at about the same amount probably as the, the coal and merit increases that you're striving for every year. But this, this first increase would be a significant amount that we would need to figure out how we were going to fund that, the timing of that funding associated with the revenue streams. But I, I think over the years, you have done a lot to invest in public safety. And I, I really want to thank you for that, for the, the technology, the equipment, for the, the buildings and, and so forth. What we're asking you now is to continue that investment into our most valuable resource, our personnel that are actually operating and responding to calls daily.
I think the key words that the chief used, gentlemen, would be performance and length of service. There is no substitute for service and job knowledge. And that's, I think that's the biggest issue that we're facing right now is to keep our employees. And as the chief said, I wish we could speak for the whole county, but we get calls every day from constituents and from the citizens who wants to know, what are you doing about this? What are you doing about that? What's your plan about gangs in Spotsylvania County? What's your plan about drugs in the county? How many people do you have doing this, that and the other? And we want to be able to answer those questions honestly and we want to be able to have the resources, gentlemen, to provide the best services to the best county in this state.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Quick question. I, I know I've seen some of your presentation before. Have you updated the numbers at all or do you have that available that you can provide to us maybe later? Or?
As far as the, the total costs?
Total cost, yeah.
Yeah, I, I can give you a, a general number now.
Sure.
For, for fire and rescue, you're looking at approximately, it's about 1.5 million to, to get personnel where they need to be and an additional 1.3 to get the sheriff's office where they need to be. So a total of 2.8 for initial implementation. So a total of 2.8 for initial implementation.
What's the recurring after that?
It's about 300 per department.
600,000 a year?
Yes, sir.
But that would not include a COLA at that point? That would just put you on a step?
If the COLAs increase the way they have, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, I think once we get where we need to be, COLAs will pretty well take care of the rest of that. Is that correct, Jay?
Yep. So there's, there's different ways that could be handled. One, one method of thought is that a COLA would continue to adjust those pay bands every year, and then you would do an analysis every three to four years to make sure they were market competitive. That is probably the, the best way to kind of keep those scales up to date, but the COLA would be applied to the scale, not necessarily to the, to the individual. So it shifts the scale and people end up on that scale wherever they would be according to their years of, of successful service.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Benton.
When I was first elected, I, I'm going to take credit for it because I'm the one pushed for the study, and I pushed it hard. Mr. Taylor, you can jump in and speak how you want if that's untrue, but that was one of my first things, was to push for a pay study. We got it passed, it was done. Unfortunately, and I've been a very strong voice of this, it's, it's certainly not, I don't think it fit our needs. It missed a lot of folks. And I'm, I've certainly been, not been happy with it. There certainly has to be some adjustment, and then, and I'll speak to the board here because we go over this every year and we talk about the COLAs and all this stuff. And for the, my life on the, in employment with Spotsylvania County, it was piecemealed. You know, and you loo, and it's like the sheriff and chief said, you know, you're getting some very experienced and knowledgeable folks that are leaving, and that's the dollar these days. The kids that, these days, it's the dollar. And I don't blame them, to be quite honest, because our benefits have certainly changed with the retirement. Tier one, if anybody is out there, you know what that is, and it's nice, and it was worth me staying for that. What it is now and what they have to go through now, I don't know, I don't blame them for probably bolting. But you know, you're talking about all this money that we're spending for all the training and keeping these guys, you know, and we're not keeping them. And it's, there's, they're seeing it every single year. We keep on going through it every single year. And then every couple of years, we say, oh, we need to do a study. And then the money, the dollar signs come back and says, oh, well, let's, let's piecemeal for three, four, or five years and eventually we'll get there. It doesn't work. It hasn't worked. What we've done up to, since 92, when I was hired to, current date, it's just, it does not work. We're going to have to do something different, and it needs to be countywide, I think. You know, I know there's some on here that complained about the step system, we do it with the schools. You know, the ones in the military, you saw, you knew what you were getting each year, you knew what you had to do to get to those positions and that salary. And we're asking the same for our local government here. We, you know, I know we, we, and I know the employees out here won't like me saying this, but we started Evergreen Study for whatever it's worth, we need to finish that out. But this board has got to start, start preparing to spend some money and getting these employees what they deserve. The amount of, you know, the ones with the knowledge and skills and putting their lives on the line every day, you know, that... You want somebody with one year experience or you want somebody with 15 coming and doing whatever report you need? When your child's been raped or assaulted or something like that, how much experience is it worth to you then? You know, that pump operator with just a couple of years or 15 years? What do you want in front of your house? I know what I'd want, and I want to keep our employees. As I can tell you, having worked with them for many years, they go... This, this county has the best employees I can ever imagine a, a place having. I think we're hands down above any jurisdiction. And for what they're paid and what we ask of them is, you know, I remember in the sheriff's office, we'd get kids in and the amount of calls that we were handling, they were just flabbergasted. They, they could not believe that we were handling this many calls, and they're coming from our agency thinking they're advancing them, you know, for the money. It's just, we're very busy, our employees go over and above every day, hardly recognized in my opinion, but they do. And it's time we quit nickel and dimeing this stuff and piecemealing this for years that never goes anywhere and get it done. Somebody wants me to say publicly, I would support a matrix or step or whatever we need to do, but I will say it needs to be countywide because it's just not, you know, fire and rescue and sheriff, it's, it's, it's all of them. So, and then, of course, the school's going to jump on board with that too, so we're going to have to be prepared. But, you know, I just, I, I know your, your struggles, I appreciate what you do every day. No, let's say, it's just, I hope we can work, work out some other benefits maybe that will, will help. Sheriff, definitely with the SWAT and all the other extracurricular things the deputies participate in, they could certainly, a rant, we could design something where they could have some extra pay for that stuff. It's time away from their families, away from the kids, and, you know, it's just, these are steps we need to take if we want to keep our personnel. Now, have we ever thought about sending out mailers too?
We, we've thought about everything, bake sales, mailers, the whole bit. I would like to say, Mr. Benton, when I first became sheriff and you came in your position, that you and I have had many conversations about public safety in this county as well as other county employees and how to keep the retention plan and keep the experience in the county. So I just wanted the other board members to know that you and I have kind of beat that horse around the neighborhood a few times. And I, I thank you for your support, sir.
Absolutely. Mr. Akbowski.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, gentlemen, for bringing this to our attention. I know that it's been brought to our attention in, in different formats over the years and different ways, but basically it's still the same problem. We used to have a step process in the county, and once a recession hit, it pretty much went out the window. And so, and we've never gotten back to it. And so what we're now feeling is, is the issues of pushing it down the road and constantly saying that what we want is an equalized tax rate, let's live within, you know, the, the money that we brought in last year. And what we're seeing is in our core services, and I'm not going to only harp on you all because in my opinion, it's public safety and education are number one and number two. And then from there, everything else, which is federally and state mandated, it sort of fills in. But it's all of our employees, both on the county side and the school side, that make our county the best that it is. I know from talking with both of you, the way that our different departments work hand in hand on multiple issues that we don't even know about, and you do it every single day. So this is not a separating or a dividing conquer, this is simply highlighting the issue that you all have that I think just speaks that, to, to the point that other departments have the exact same issue. And so what we need to do is get on board with, the Evergreen Study was fine, that was, it was a good step to, to start with, but it's not the end of what we need to do to really retain the quality that we need to retain. And if we are being poached, and I know that this has happened for years with state police, until the General Assembly finally increased, was a, a couple of years ago, they increased pay in the area, but still, when you're at the bottom rung, you know, and you're starting your career and there is no guarantee whatsoever, and you don't see it over the couple of years you've been here of any increase in your pay except a, a COLA here or there, you know, I, I don't blame anybody for, for looking out for their family and doing what's best for them. But in my elected role, I need to do what's best for our county and our community. And I think that it is, it's about time that we really take this issue seriously, and we need to address it. Because if we continue to push this down the road, the bill gets bigger, the problem gets larger, and it gets even harder to get a, get control of it. So if we do it step by step, as we've done with Evergreen, we, we implement it, but we let people know that we are embarking on this process that is going to take us to where we need to get to. But it's, it's something that we, it, it's well past due, and we just need to, we just need to do it. So thank you for that, but I, I do want other county employees and school employees to know that this is a countywide issue that we need to tackle, you know, in total, in, in total, and not piece it out and, and play one against the other because it's all of us working together. So thank you very much.
It's, may I respond to that, Mr. Chairman? From day one, working with the Public Safety Committee, after it was restructured when the sheriff's department and fire and rescue started working together, it's never been my intentions or the fire chiefs to eliminate anyone that works in this county because we are a team. And on a daily basis, we deal with almost every agency and every department in this county. Number one, trying to keep county employees safe, and number two, trying to deliver the services that we need to deliver. I'm a taxpayer in this county, and I don't like to sit in here and see you guys raise taxes. But by the same token, as the sheriff, I'm responsible for 128,000 people, and so is the fire chief. So when we come here as a team, as public safety, we're not trying to short schools or any other part of this county, we support everything in this county. So I just want all the other county employees to know that, that we're not trying to short them, but we are trying to look out for public safety, that's why we're in these positions.
Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a real quick figure from the money, the, the, the people we lose, getting them trained back, I think the total is 1.585 million a year. And from what you just told me, that we could do it for roughly 2.8 million dollars. So in two years, we would pay for this program rather than having to take the chance of training more people, letting them leave. We can do this and get our money back within, I won't say back, but we'll cover less, well, we'll spend less than if we do anything whatsoever about it. So it's very serious that we take a look at that 2.8 million. The other question is, in your step program, you're looking at a step every two years?
The, the way it's formatted in the, the proposal now is every year. So that's, that's modifiable, but looking at every year to provide...
You know how the schools do it?
That recency. I, I do not know what the schools are doing.
Why don't you check with them too? I think it'd be a nice thing, because I'm thinking of, you, you mentioned the military. Well, for us, it's two years. When you take a look at it, two years in your rank, then you move up the next thing. So, but the important part is, you know that 10 years down the road, if you're still here, you should be making this. And I think that's super important, too.
The, the proposal is, is based off really some of our, again, I hate to call them competitors, but some of our other jurisdictions that we, we have seen actively recruiting our personnel. So that's, that's why it was presented as a year. Again, that is, that is not a hard and fast rule, and I'm open to discussion on that.
Well, let me ask you, if, if, if I wanted to work for Spotsylvania, and the difference was getting half my pay one year or getting that double pay the second year out, and I really enjoy what I do in working for this county, I wouldn't worry about the first year. I'd say second years were, every two years you look at it, knowing that instead of getting half that raise one year and then the other half the next year, it is doable. And it comes down to, if it's the money you're staying or leaving for, then you know exactly what you're going to get, whether it be one year or two years, but I would recommend two years. Okay? That still gives them justification to stick around, knowing that it worked.
I think the important thing, Mr. Skinner, is when you can pick up that pay scale and you can see what you're doing this year, and you can see next year and the following year, and knowing that that five-year-old kid is getting ready to start school next year, that you can afford to buy school clothes, or 18 years from now, when that child's getting ready to go to college, you've got an opportunity to come up with the tuition. So I think just the fact that this proposal would give you something concrete that you can base your family's livability on is what we're, that's what I'm looking at, and I think that's what the chief is looking at. And I think that's one of the biggest problems that we face every day with new recruits. The sheriff's department now is recruiting all up and down the East Coast. Out of that 208 I told you about, we get six qualified people. That doesn't mean we're going to put six people on the street. We don't know that they're going to make it through the academy or what might happen in the future. But I don't want to see those six recruits spend a year here, us spend several hundred thousand dollars on them and they go to Prince William or some other agency. So not that I'm picking on Prince William.
Well, what I'd like to see is a consistent thing. I mean, since you have talked and Mr. Akbowski called it too, we need to be fair across the board. So, you know, I'm just, and, and the schools are proud of this county, and if there are steps, I just think that when we look at this, let's keep it, keep it simple but consistent so everybody knows what they've got to do to, to financially support it. So, if schools do it one year, fine, you know, we just need to make it consistent throughout the county, so that's what I would think.
Being married to a retired teacher, I'm not going to say anything bad about the school system. I do have to go home tonight, so.
Mr. Benton.
But on the yearly increase, you're not talking 10% every year, stuff like that? What kind of percentages are you talking about?
It's, it's actually a set amount per year to take you through a, essentially a 25-year career.
Versus the 30 that they're, that Evergreen has suggested when we can retire? Public safety can retire at 25?
So it's a set dollar amount per position rather than using a percentage. And the reason I went with a set dollar amount is percentages tend to compound, and, and that's where we start getting some of the compression and leapfrogging. So it ranges from, at the very start of your career, being actually close to a 4% as you're, we're moving through, and as you're finishing out your career, ends up being about a 1.5%.
And that's still based on performance evals all through your career? And if you're not productive, well, I won't get into that.
All right. And what I was trying to get to earlier was, I was going to steal the, the phrase, "master of your craft." That's what we want in, in Spotsylvania. You know, you talk to somebody a year out of the academy compared to five, 10 years, I mean, those folks know it like, you don't really have to think. Somebody straight out of a very few years, you, you just don't have, you're not the master of your craft yet.
That's the experience that counts. And in any part of public safety, that experience can save your life and your team worker's life. So that's, you know, sad times we live in, gentlemen, let's just be honest about it.
Mr. Marshall.
Chairman, this program right here gives, I, I like to see it implemented countywide for all county employees. It gives a start and a finish to anyone's career. It's very well put together. When you can take, and you hire someone in a pay grade that starts at $20,000 and it goes to $60,000 as we advertise positions, but we don't have a set number to that person's career. To get to that $60,000 mark Spotsylvania County, it doesn't say you've got to work 20 years or you've got to work 50 years. So no county employee has any, nothing concrete to go on. This program, it, it does do that, and I, I support it. I'd like to support it countywide. I'd like to get our finance department to start working on this to see what it would cost us countywide to do this program. This compress, this is a compression issue with pay. It started with the recession in 2008, and guess what? County employees that were working here then, they took, they lost a cost of living raise, they lost the merit increases, and they, they went through that loss, I believe it was about a seven to eight-year period before they even got a cost of living raise back, but base pay's increased. So that guy that comes in 10 years, you know, 10 years after, that guy that started in 2008, he's right there with that guy. So you've got 10 years of experience, and you've got a guy with one year experience and they're neck and neck on their paychecks. And you can't keep people that way. And it's, we lose people not only, we, we lose people north of the Rapid Hank River all the time because of pay, and it's not just fire and rescue and law enforcement. We're using construction, utilities, we're losing guys everywhere. Guys work here for three or four years, get the experience, and they go other places, and we need to stop that. So I, I like your, I like your program, and like I said, I'd like to see if we can get finance to take your numbers and work them in with the rest of the county employees and see what that number would be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chairman, I'll, uh, I'll ask, other than not enough money, uh, do you see the main problem with the Evergreen study that it's a one-time, I mean, we've spread over three years, but basically a one-time fix as opposed to this structure that you're talking about that they can count on year after year?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, that's what I see the problem is, the compression. And, um, when you can't pick up that piece of paper and look in black and white and see where you're going to be five years down the road, 10 years down the road, I find that's the biggest issue with the people that leave my agency, uh, and there haven't been that many, thank goodness. But that's, that's the problem is being able to know where they're going to be. And as Mr. Marshall just said, when we hire a new recruit this week that is starting at the, almost the same amount of money as starting pay that a five, six-year veteran is making, that's hard to explain when the guys are looking at it black and white. So, I, I find the compression issue to be the biggest problem.
Right. This, this helps provide that structure of where to place people within those grades. Um, and, um, you know, there's, there's some, some issues within our compensation philosophy, uh, the way it is written, uh, that this would resolve.
And the Evergreen recommendations didn't touch that, right?
I, I think the, uh, the Evergreen recommendations of the, uh, essentially the market study, I think the grades, um, are relatively, relatively accurate as far as where they should be. The issue is placement of people within those grades and providing that mechanism to move through them. And, uh, is, it's really that which we're lacking right now, uh, in the current, uh, program. The, uh, the current philosophy also, um, limits, um, outside of ex, extra, uh, extra circumstances, um, when someone is promoted, uh, the theory is each grade is a 5% increase. Uh, our current compensation philosophy limits that to 10% total increase. Uh, so the promotion may be three to four grades, we only increase them by what's equivalent to two grades. Uh, so that creates the additional compression issues, um, where we're not moving people through and placing them, uh, within those pay grades as we would, we would desire to.
No one else has anything? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chairman, that should bring us to closed meeting. Carl?
Mr. Chair, members of your board, uh, this will be your resolution to adjourn in the closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disbanding, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the county, specifically the position of Director of Economic Development, the position of Zoning Administrator, the position of Director of Human Resources, the position of County Administrator, the position of Interim County Administrator, uh, the County Administrator and a Deputy County Administrator. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property, or discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining positioning, position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically discussion of real property in the Berkeley District. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically relating to zoning processes and procedures and a claim submitted by Brian and Jean DeVoter for the Board of Supervisors' consideration. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.23711A, 1, 3, and 8, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
So moved.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Akabowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted and conformed with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
So moved. Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Akabowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
They, uh, you had moved, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, you had moved the consideration of the DeVoters' claim, uh, till after the closed meeting?
Is there a motion from the board?
A motion to deny the claim and have the county administrator, um, let the DeVoters know.
Mr. Akabowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Nay.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And lastly, you had pushed back the, uh, consideration of the, uh, the change in the date of the meeting of February 5th.
And my motion with the, uh, friendly amendment from Mr. Marshall was cancel the meeting on the 5th and schedule the, uh, solar, uh, the SUPs, the public hearings on the SUPs on the 26th and move that meeting of February and move that meeting to the Marshall Center.
And would you like to keep it at 6 o'clock or would you like to move that to 4:30?
I think 4:30. Mr. Cole?
If you want to move it up, I, I'd recommend you move it up to 5:00 because Marshall Center has employees in it until 4:30 and that would give them time to clear out and, and free up the parking. So, if you wanted to start it early, I'd recommend you do it at 5:00 instead of 4:30.
Very well.
Um, and the other, the other thing I would ask, uh, the board or recommend the board, if you could, so, uh, Wanda's not in the position of having a compressed time by which to advertise playing commission meeting. Uh, if you wouldn't mind, uh, Amy can go ahead and change, uh, the resolution for you all to consider, and actually, you all can adopt the resolution tonight that will make the change. We can advertise it and that way Wanda can go ahead, um, and advertise that without having the compressed timeframe. Otherwise, we'll have to wait until you all's next meeting, the first meeting in February to actually vote on the resolution to adopt the change.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Skinner.
But the question is then we're not going to look at any other, other places to hold this? Because now we changed it to the 26th, would there be a auditorium in the school? I'm, I'm just telling you, from what I saw, an easier...
Mr. Skinner, we've checked with the schools, um, on multiple occasions and we have not been able to come up with a date that works.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, to, to this time.
That's okay. Fine, we'll give it tomorrow.
So, is it all right if, if Amy goes and, and makes that change and, uh, types it up so we can adopt the resolution this evening?
Real quick question before we do it. If there's no time, uh, the, uh, crunch time, why don't we just wait till February 12th? If you can check with schools on February 26th, because I really think that we do need another location than that. If we go ahead and advertise it now, we're stuck with the Marshall Center. And, uh, i- if there's no time crunch, what does it harm to actually have it formally done on February 12th that this is the actual...
There's, there's no time crunch for me, the time, or for you all, for the advertisement and the change. The issue again is the time crunch for Wanda. Wanda has to actually have everything to, if, if Wanda wants to, to discuss a little bit more, but my understanding is the time crunch really is on her, um, because she has to, uh, advertise it, uh, once a week for two consecutive weeks. Your all's resolution only has to be advertised, you know, seven days out. So, the time crunch really comes to her, not, not with the resolution you all adopt.
It's two weeks prior to the meeting.
Mr. Benton.
Mr. I think on the last, uh, at least from the folks I heard from, the Marshall Center, a lot of the, those issue, all the issues that we were told and about and had heard and watched or whatever was addressed. Um, so that's what I had heard, at least on the last, the last one, as far as the voice and hearing people and everything like that at the Marshall Center.
Mr. Akabowski.
Thank you. Well, I'm speaking more from my planning commissioner who said that being there and listening, that those kind of things can't be addressed. It's just the, the facility itself is, is, we should look at another facility if we can. And if there's no rush, if it's two weeks before, uh, then we do it on February 12th. I'm just suggesting it. I mean, it's obviously up to what the board wants to do, but I, I would rather go to a different location. Parking is going to be a mess. I mean, look at it, we're going to have to start it at 5:00 or 5:30. It's going to go on for multiple, multiple hours. We all know that. And if we had another location, perhaps it would, it would ease up. All I'm saying is we can look at it, that's it. And if there really isn't any time crunch, I would like to hear from Wanda if that's okay, that if, if the 12th is too late or if we could do it by then.
We would be doing exactly the same thing that I'm doing today where I have everything teed up and ready to go and I, I would pull the trigger tomorrow for February 5th. I'd be doing the same thing on the 12th for the 26th. So, we can make it work. Um, we'll just have everything ready to go and there's just no time for any error. Should a run in the newspaper go bad for whatever reason, we wouldn't have time to recoup from that.
So, we put off this motion until our next meeting.
I'm prepared to vote on the motion, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I don't see a problem with the Marshall Center. It worked for a planning commission for two meetings. I don't understand why it won't work for us. Um, they had some issues the first time, they resolved them through our IRS department. Seems like they've done a fair job, at least the folks that I talked to also.
All right. There's a motion on the floor.
I think, I think, Mr. Chair, um, if, if the board wants to, uh, I think it would be appropriate maybe to ask the board, uh, if they would, are prepared to, uh, effectuate the meeting change or, uh, uh, look for more options. If you all are ready to effectuate the change tonight, again, um, I think the direction would be to, you know, have Amy go upstairs, prepare the resolution, come down and vote it. However, if it's the board's, uh, desire to, to put the, this change off and to look for more locations, um, then you would, uh, I guess move to cancel the meeting on the 5th and put off the, uh, the decision on where to make the change, uh, to February 12th and we'll have the resolutions, uh, ready on, uh, the next, uh, meeting.
There's a motion on the floor. Um, if a board member wants to make a motion to table it, that would be remissible. Mr. Akabowski.
You're looking at me, so I'm assuming that I'm that board member.
If, if you'd like to table.
So, I make the motion to table it and then we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Table and cancel the 5th.
Correct. Motion to table and cancel the 5th.
Mr. Benton.
Nay.
Mr. Marshall.
Nay.
Mr. Skinner.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Akabowski.
Yes.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Nay.
And the chair votes aye.
Okay. 4:30.
Think we can entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.